10:00 AM, blocked by the wall. We'll call this meeting order. Let the record reflect that all five county commissioners are here. And we'll start the morning with a pledge of allegiance by our esteemed clerk treasurer Kathy Lewis. Is Kathy here?
Sorry, I was, I was not ready. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the, I hate saying this by myself. Can someone else please do it? I was not, I was so discombobulated right now.
I'll back you up Kathy.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I am discombobulated. I can't even get it started. This is so embarrassing. Mr. Ingles, do you mind doing it for us?
I'll back you up.
Thank you.
Okay, on your feet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ingles, and thank you Kathy Lewis. So we are in concession and will open this for public comment. No action. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the board meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that are provided to the county commissioners and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting, once at the beginning of the board meeting and again at the end of the meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on Douglas County's public comment phone line 775-783-6007 once public comment period has been opened. Once public comment closes, the voice messages will be played to the public and the county commissioners in the order they are recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person, will be played during the public comment period. The board wants to encourage a respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irreverent and irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. Douglas County's public comment phone line became available to take public comment at 10:00 AM. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment phone line. Please start playing the public comments. Ms. Wood?
Natalie Wood, for the record, I will start playing them. G. Shizuru, S-H-I-Z-U-R-U. I am against the budget that's being presented today at the county commissioners' meeting because you have still not found a legitimate source of money for the $500,000 commitment for the Muller Parkway Bill Grant application. The only answer that you offered at yesterday's budget meeting is that it is in the budget. Since that is an unsatisfactory explanation, it leaves the public guessing where is the money? A likely guess is the large unexplained decrease in Johnson Lake Stormwater Funding Program of $925,000. The $1.1 million annual commitment to stormwater maintenance has been cut by $925,000, leaving only $170,000 to be spent in stormwater maintenance. According to a Record Courier article on August 29, 2018, the $1.1 million that was dedicated from the general fund to the stormwater maintenance plan was dedicated in order to prevent the establishment of a new stormwater utility which would lead to leveling new impacts on this Johnson Lake residence. Without explicit identification where the $500,000 commitment for Muller Parkway is located in the budget, we citizens are forced to guess where it has been budgeted. If the commissioners are pretending that they have funded the $500,000 Muller Parkway when they have not, we citizens continue to expose their fraud and lack of transparency. Let no citizen forget that if the commissioners had disbanded RDA 2, there ostensibly would have been money to fund stormwater maintenance and Muller Parkway. Okay, next.
Good morning commissioners. My name is Adrian Sawyer, A-B-R-I-E-N-N-E-S-A-W-Y-E-R, for the record. I would like to comment on Commissioner Ingles' comment regarding the sheriff's department overtime budget. Commissioner Ingles' offhand remarks about deputies hooking boots to trees for eight hours until the deputy returns duty to reduce overtime is completely inappropriate and below his office. While I understand, or at least hope, it was a bad joke, as a public servant, Commissioner Ingles' duty is to represent the citizens of Douglas County in a professional manner. Failed. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Yes, hi, good morning. My name is Brian Fitzgerald, F-I-T-Z-G-E-R-A-L-D. I'm the president of the Carson Valley Arts Council. And I have a question about an item that was discussed in the budget yesterday under the general fund. In the county manager's department, there's a line item identified as contributions. And this account has traditionally been used to help support funding for organizations such as the Carson Valley Arts Council, the Historical Society, and the Dangburg Home Ranch, among other things. I am noticing that there's a $26,500 proposed reduction to that account, and so I was looking for clarification to see what organizations are still being funded for the proposed budget fiscal year 2021. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last of the messages that have been received. The last message was received at 10:04 AM. Barry, you're still muted. Okay.
All right. Well, that takes care of the public comment. As a note, Mr. Cates, if you would explain the situation on the, on the question, the last question that we received for the community grants, I think is what he's talking about. Approval of the agenda, we're looking for a motion.
Since Commissioner Walsh still moved?
Second.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Nelson, all of whom favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on. Item number one for possible action, discussion and public hearings on the possible adoption of the FY 2020 21 final budgets for Douglas County, Douglas County Redevelopment Agency, the towns of Gardnerville, Genoa, Minden, and the Douglass, Tahoe Douglas Transportation District per NRS 354.598. Ms. Willoughby and Mr. Cates?
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. Today, we want to finalize the budget as presented yesterday. Couple of comments I would like to clarify, there was no reductions proposed to the stormwater fund. We were still, had the original $1.1 contribution in the budget. And the funding for Muller Parkway will be from the funding that, from RTC, and it will be identified at a later date as proposed in the CIP. With that, I'd like to open it up if there's any follow-up questions on yesterday's budget, and then we'll go into the possible restorations, and Patrick will lead that discussion. But I'd like to open it up if there's any questions.
Any questions from the, the board? I've, I've had two questions. The first is I would think we're going to talk about it in this next meeting in the room tax, but I think it's also partly funded in the community grants, but the museum is concerned about funding. And if we're going to restore funding to libraries, it's every bit as important to preserve our, our heritage. And we should be looking at how we're going to fund the museum to keep the museums, both the Dangburg and the high school, the old high school, open. Is that going to be addressed separately, or do you want to talk about it during this discussion? That's the first question. Second question is that Dr. Norango from the USGS was seeking funding, and we had asked Dr. Norango to give us a scientific discussion and presentation and investigation on the size and volume of our aquifer. Mr. Cates replied to him last night and said that we probably can't fund that. If that's the case, it would seem to me appropriate to ask all of the water purveyors, both sewer and water, which would amount to eight, to help us fund that, and we could put up maybe 25,000 each to fund that, that kind of investigation. That way, it would actually start the discussion of a regional water system also, which we have talked about before. We've had many discussions in the, in the commission about water, and I think it's time that we go for a real scientific investigation of it. So, Mr. Cates, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the USGS contract, I, I agree with you. It's a very important project for the county. I like your idea of going to the, the local water providers and asking them to make contributions. I would ask that we set that aside in this budget and that we get this budget put to bed, but that you guys task me with going out and seeing if we can figure out a way to, to fund that. I know it's important. I can't remember the breakdown. I think over four years, it was like a 300 and something thousand dollar commitment, you know, with a little bit each year. But I can certainly follow up on that. I would just ask that we not do it as part of this approval to get this budget to taxation by the first.
Does that meet with the approval of the rest of the board? Commissioner Ingles?
The USGS is paid for with federal tax dollars, is it not?
Correct.
Why do we have to pay them?
I, I ask that question every time. In fact, that's why the director of the USGS is not considered friendly toward me. I think that they should be funding the study because they're a federal government arm. However, what I think and and if you agree with me, what you think, they don't respond unless they get separate funding. I don't think that's, but that's the way it is.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but yes, that, that is their funding model. We also did a lot of work with them when I was at Department of Wildlife, and all the projects they do, they look for contributions from the local entity. They actually are, are including a contribution from them in this project, so it wouldn't be paid solely by the county. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can certainly share them with the board.
Well, thank you. I mean, I understand, but I don't understand, but that's the way it is, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I totally agree with you, sir. And Mr. Cates, are you going to come back with a separate proposal for this?
Yes.
All right, and does that meet with the agreement of the rest of the board members?
I have no problem with it.
Put this budget to bed as soon as possible.
Okay.
I would like to address the, the question of the contributions. There's two pots of money in the county manager's budget, commissioners' budget. One is contributions, which I believe is what the caller was discussing, and those were items that have been pulled out of the community grant process historically. I'd like to bring that back as a separate pot of money with a list of the historical funding for that item and let the board weigh in on, on that, because that's not done through the community grant process. I just don't think it's something you've looked at in recent years.
Yeah, I, I'm going to cover that a little bit in the, in the summary as well, because it wasn't, it wasn't clearly called out what was going on there in the, in the in the general fund summary sheet. It was kind of buried in the details. Do you want me to go ahead and go over that now?
Yes, why don't you, since it's top of mind.
Okay. Okay, so if you look at page nine of your budget worksheet reports, that's county manager's office, you will see a proposal, the contributions category was budgeted at 141,500, and we're recommending reducing it by 26,500. That is, that leaves 115,000 for contributions. That goes to Carson Valley Arts Council, Carson Valley Reforestation and Beautification, Douglas County Historical Society, Friends of the Dangburg Ranch, Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, and TRPA. And that wasn't called out in the summary, so I apologize for that.
What do we give the TRPA?
Natalie, can you help with that?
Yes, Natalie Wood, for the record, TRPA, the annual amount has been 26,500.
Is that dues, or what is it?
That is contributions. We do have a contract with them for that amount. I might have to look at the contract in detail to provide more details on that.
How long's the contract good for?
Let me see if I can pull it up real quick.
Well, while she's doing that, are there any other questions from the board? I have one, and that usually, when we're talking about the community grants, we we fund about $10,000, if I remember, to suicide prevention. Are you considering that you're going to still fund suicide prevention at some level?
Natalie Wood, for the record, suicide prevention has applied for the community grant every year, not a ongoing contribution.
Well, it's an ongoing contribution.
So we would still, this is Terry Willoughby for the record, we would still be bringing the community grants back to the board for their approval as to who has awarded the community grants. This is just to approve the budget, the total budget.
So, and, and let me, let me talk about community grants, because that's, that's a separate item. The community grants you see on that next line item on page nine, that was put in here in error. It was supposed to not be in this budget. It actually is on page 26.
Right, it's actually in three places. But go ahead.
Which is the general services account. It was at 125,000 in the tentative budget, and we're proposing reducing it by 64,000, leaving 61,000 available for community grants. And we would like it removed from the county manager's budget, so that there would be 61,000 remaining in general services.
There was also, it was augmented in the community grants by the indigent fund. Is that going to still occur?
I believe, I don't know if that was adjusted on their end or not. I don't know if anybody knows that. I don't think it was adjusted.
No, I looked in, I'll double check, but I don't believe it was adjusted on their end.
Does that, when you say adjusted, does that mean it was taken out or left in?
Left in.
All right, so then is, because I think it's like 35,000 from the indigent fund. And that primarily aided those things that were indigent related. And perhaps Scott Morgan can address that one. It's his turn to, to do this. All right.
I'm, I'm confused, Barry. If you're taking $125,000 out of the county manager's budget, where does that $125,000 go?
So the $125,000 goes into the general services account, 191, and you can see that on page 26. You can see the 125,000 in the tentative budget, and for final, we reduced it down to 61,000 proposed.
Okay, I, I mean, I see that on page 26, but I also see it on page nine still, so there seems to be $125,000 floating around somewhere.
Exactly, and if you can see, I've shared my screen, that should not have been in there. That was an error. That 125,000 on page nine needs to be removed. It shouldn't be in both places.
So now it's in your-
I added it. Yeah, I've added it to the spreadsheet, so that basically it means there's another 125,000 available. I know it's negative, and that probably looks confusing, but this is, this is, this is to add things back to the budget, so this needs to be taken out.
Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion on that, and it wasn't accurately stated in the summary sheet, so wanted to make sure we covered that. As long as I have the spreadsheet up, maybe I can just quickly run through this. We went over this yesterday. Based on the discussions that were had, I made some changes. I took out a restoration of board travel and training. I took out holding the stormwater position vacant, because I heard a desire not to further reduce stormwater. And for stormwater funding, rather than completely eliminate the $5,000 transfer, which is an old transfer and doesn't seem like it needs to be called out separately, we just rolled that into the totals to true up stormwater, so stormwater's budget would actually have another $5,000, which we could roll into services and supplies, just so we're not dealing with that other transfer. And then, rather than propose restoring anything, I balanced this by basically adding to the reserves, the projected reserve balance, the 173,000, which you could reallocate somewhere else if you wanted to. But this is the way I propose doing it.
I thought we left the $15,000 in there. That's...
Although we would restore it?
That's what I thought, but...
I, I wasn't clear. There was conversation back and forth. If that's a desire of the board, I'm happy to put it back.
Well, like you say, there's potential one to three new members in January. They're going to need training, et cetera, so.
Yep. I had proposed adding it back if that's a desire of the board.
What's the, what's the desire of the board? Commissioner Nelson?
I'd leave it out.
Commissioner Ingles?
Well, this is, this is not on this line item. I wanted to ask a question. What about the 50,000 a year we'd been paying for rent up there at the transportation center? I dug around the budget, I didn't see it. It's probably in there.
So we have a draft contract we're working on with them right now to redo those numbers. I'm not sure, I don't know if we adjusted for that. I don't know, Natalie, if you can address that?
Natalie, for the record, we didn't adjust anything for that. We left that one as is for our for the room and our agreement there.
Where, where is that?
Mr. Chairman, this is Scott Morgan. The $50,000 is in the room tax budget, and I'll show that when, on an upcoming presentation.
I thought that we had left the discussion that we were going to reduce it to $10,000.
You gave me a range in which to negotiate with them, which we're finalizing right now.
Is it great?
We're going to be bringing it back to the board. What's that?
What are you going to budget for that? You're going to budget the whole 50,000?
No, we don't need to do that.
So why don't we put a, a number that we're shooting for there?
Good. 15,000 was the-
Additional.
15,000 was the upper limit the board gave me, so we could adjust it for that.
Yeah, that was a good call on Commissioner Ingles. I think it was 15,000 that we decided at the late meeting.
Yeah, it's going to be the max. So that brings up about 35,000.
Yeah, I recall a range like between 12 and 15K, but that even seems like an awful rich number, especially now when we're not even using it. So I think that should be reduced substantially, and that money should be reallocated somewhere else. That's just a thought.
Well, I'll bring the contract back to the board, and, and you guys can decide. We, we could adjust this budget down to 15,000. I think that would cover whatever we end up at.
Okay, now, we were, we were talking about, do, do the commissioners want to leave in 15,000 for training and travel in the commissioner budget? Commissioner Rice?
I believe that we ought to leave it in. I know that the training I got in my first year was invaluable. And we have no idea at this point how many commissioners, new commissioners we're going to. I would leave it in.
Yeah, so.
Chairman?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
It seems reasonably fair to put that into the, back into the library budget, because they're getting hit pretty hard. And we'll just expense those trips as they arrive, as they come up.
Well, we're going to have a budget number.
I'll give in 1,000.
1,000? So what, what do you think, Commissioner Walsh?
Like I said before, I think the original budget of 15,000 is reasonable, but that's just me. I agree with Commissioner Rice.
What if we make a compromise of 7,500?
Done.
Okay.
So we leave some monies in there. Then if you need to augment it, you can.
Thank you.
Is that good direction, Mr. Cates?
Sure, that's good. I, I've got it in the spreadsheet now. And I would point out that, that we do have 89,000 to add back to the library in the spreadsheet, and also that I'm balancing against this general fund revenue increase, 173,000. If the board wanted to reallocate that to anything down here, you certainly have that option.
Well, if you, if you did that, you could reallocate some of the monies to the community grants, which you know, they're going to come forward with those things. This, I, I don't know if the balance would help the sheriff on either of his two positions.
Yeah, you know, whatever the board wants to do, but I would just caution you about adding back positions. If, if our situation deteriorates and the next level of cuts is eliminating positions and laying people off, and we need time to do that, up to 60 days' notice, so I would caution you about adding back positions at this point. It's not a, it's not an easy expense to get out of.
Chair?
There are way to allocate the, if, if you allocate some to the community grants, you said it's 170 some odd thousand?
So right now, the budget, if, if we take this out, this 125, the total budget for community grants would be 61,000. So we could add back 64,000, I think is the math, and that would take it back to 125,000.
So you could apply that towards the deputy position and ask the sheriff to not hire that person until after the September review?
Yeah, we would leave it out of the budget. Y- y- yeah, we would leave it out of the budget until we reviewed in September.
You leave it out of the budget. You gotta put it somewhere. How do you leave it out of the budget?
Chairman?
Commissioner.
Can we, can we put it in a reserve account?
That.
That's that line thirteen.
You could always come back and reallocate money out of here if, if we actually, uh, are balanced.
So Patrick, I would propose adding sixty-four thousand dollars, uh, in the community grants, and then increasing the general fund reserve.
I agree with that. Any other commissioner?
So, so, uh, if I add sixty-four thousand to community grants, that'll restore it back to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and I'll have to lower this reserve number to fund it.
Need to lower the reserve number?
Yes.
One, uh, is that item sixteen or item thirteen on line sixteen?
Yes.
So, I'm not. So what is, before you restore it, what is the balance in, uh, item thirteen? Three hundred and forty-four thousand?
So, before anything is restored, it's three hundred and, so this is the amount of increase in reserve from the beginning of the budget to the end of the budget. The budget will end with about an eight million dollar reserve, which is two months of operating, which is where we want it to be. So, if we make these adjustments up here, decreasing transfers of China Springs and tru- truing up stormwater, then that, here, let me take this out of here. So all of these revenue changes right here, if we change these transfers, that frees up a hundred and ninety thousand dollars um, out of these transfer sources. And if we don't balance it against these expenditures, whatever the balance is, I'm balancing against this reserve. So it would increase the reserve if you don't spend all this one ninety down here, if that makes sense.
So, really, increase the three hundred and forty-four thousand seventy-five dollars by a hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and seven. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it would end up with, uh, over a half a million dollars that's not allocated, but could be allocated depending on what happens after September. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Seems reasonable to me. Any, uh, commissioners?
I, I agree with that. You know, it's good to have a little bit of reserves to adjust with.
I mean, to, to do it that way. Uh, we have no idea what's gonna happen.
Okay, okay, so. Yeah, a- any other comments? Commissioner Nelson, Commissioner, uh, Walsh?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, just to review and make sure I've got this right. So for restorations, I have weed control, transfers to libraries, eliminating the duplicate hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar community grant, restoring sixty-four thousand dollars to community grants, which brings it back to one twenty-five, and seventy-five hundred dollars for board travel and training. That totals to eighty-eight thousand, so I would be putting a hundred and one thousand and some change back into reserve. Unless there's other actions the board wants.
That's four hundred and fifty thousand.
We have to work with, I think, this all sounds, um, as good as we're gonna get.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Does that conclude your questions? Mr. Kate?
Patrick, just as a, oh, could you email us this final sheet so I can have it for my records?
You bet.
And we will amend the budget reports to reflect these changes and make sure that those are available on our website after the budget is approved.
Okay. Are there any other comments on this item? Uh, Ms. Willoughby, are we concluded with the first item then?
Uh, we would be looking for a motion to adopt the budget as presented with the changes um, uh, presented by Patrick Gates.
Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the budget as presented with the changes by the county manager.
Uh, I'd move to approve the proposed changes and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, final budgets for Douglas County as per the county manager.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays?
Very much.
Very s- five-oh. Okay, now we'll move on to item two. Back to this page. Item two for possible action discussion to review and approve proposed changes to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one for the Douglas County Room Tax Fund, two thirty-four per NRS, three fifty-four point five nine eight. Ms. Willoughby and Scott Morgan, welcome, Mr. Morgan and Mr. Cates. Who's gonna lead off on this? Okay, we'll pick Scott Morgan to lead off on it.
Okay.
Because we don't have a volunteer.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Scott Morgan, Community Services Director for Douglas County. And as part of it, I would like to do a little brief presentation, I guess maybe not so brief, as brief as I can make it, regarding, uh, information in Room Tax Fund. So I'm going to share my screen. All right, welcome, everybody. This is the Room Tax Fund presentation. And Room Tax Fund contains a number of fund departments. It has a revenue section, admin, promo, which is the transfer in and out money we collect for promo that just gets directly transferred to those agencies providing room tax promotion, park operations, park development, recreation, recreation, temp and seasonal, KAL Community Center, Valley Facility Gym and Fitness, and Valley Community and Meeting Rooms. Gotta get my act down. The Room Tax Fund is dedicated to parks and recreation, promotion at the lake and valley, state and the Douglas County Airport, supports economic vitality, valley roads, lake transit, um, and also provides management structure for the weed control and animal care services, um, departments within the general fund. It maintains non-park facilities, pays rent to the, um, to up at the lake for the board meetings at the transit facility, provides meeting space for a variety of, uh, departments, and is the health and wellness program for Douglas County. It also does construction management, um, and supports the public guardian, cooperative extension, and project management. All right, um, I'd like to spend just a little time talking specifically about the revenue sources, mainly the Room Tax Fund, because it's a, it's an interesting, uh, piece where a lot of the money goes in and out, and some is in contained within the Room Tax Budgets, others just go directly as a pass-through. This year in the Room Tax Fund, we are, uh, reflecting a thirty-nine percent reduction in Room Tax revenues. Room Tax is not the only revenue source within the Room Tax Fund, but it is the biggest. We all are aware that, uh, Room Tax is fourteen cents at the lake and thirteen cents in the valley. How that is broken up is by statute, ten percent is set across Douglas County, um, in accordance with NRS, and then Douglas County implemented the tr- the transient lodgers license tax, which is four cents at the lake and three cents in the valley, for a total of fourteen cents at the lake and thirteen cents at the valley. Yeah, correct. Here we go. This is a summary of where all the Room Tax goes. If we take the total of the Room Tax and the transient lodgers license tax, uh, eight million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, uh, where does all that money go in whole? And you'll see three percent goes to state promotion, which is the three eighths of one cent, correct, collected across Douglas County. That's a pass-through number, and it's not showing in your budget. So if you were to run a calculator on the Room Tax dollars in the budget, you would not come up with eight point three, because the, the state promo money is directly passed through. Douglas County Promotion and Convention Center receives five million two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, or sixty-three percent. And Douglas County receives two point, uh, two million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of that. Uh, admin, to pay for collections and support for collecting Room Tax, receives forty-nine thousand dollars. The Tahoe Transportation District, five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and Douglas County Road, sixty-seven thousand dollars. Of the fourteen cents collected at the lake, you'll see sixty-five percent goes directly to promotion and the Convention Center. Douglas County receives twenty-four percent. And of the sixty-five percent collected at the lake, these are the various entities that, uh, receive that, uh, including the Visitors Authority, which re- receives the, the largest portion, and the Chamber gets a traditional carve-out. Uh, you typically, under separate action, uh, will be done by resolution to support the Chamber of Commerce, and the TDVA also receives, uh, additional dollars just for the Convention Center. Thirteen cents collected at the lake, uh, equates to forty-two percent going to promotion and forty-six percent coming to Douglas County. We also receive, uh, some money for Douglas County Roads of the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars. One hundred percent of the forty-three, uh, percent of the valley promotion goes to the Carson Valley Visitors Authority. We all are aware what the legislature did through, uh, Senate Bill four sixty-one, uh, meant a five dollar per night room charge at the lake, and those dollar amounts have been reduced from what we initially projected down to a dollar amount that goes directly to the Douglas, or the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, and the amount of one million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The PALS revenue, uh, which the Finance Director, uh, did a really nice job talking about that yesterday, uh, is distributed to Parks and Recreation, the Library, and the Senior Center. So the Room Tax portion of the PALS revenue is twenty percent, which equates to three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. This was a voter-approved, uh, act, and that dollar amount has been reduced by twenty-two percent from the tentative budget. Utility operator fee. The utility operator fee is, uh, set up by ordinance, and this is a half cent or half of one percent of, of funds that are collected on utility bills, primarily electricity and natural gas. There is also telecommunication included of that, and that half cent was dedicated to the community center operation, of which a portion of it gets shifted over to the senior fund, and then the remaining, um, stays. The remaining, how that is broken down, is one hundred thousand dollars goes to the senior center operation, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars goes into the Room Tax Fund. Charges for services. Charges for services, these, this is what revenues, uh, projected from program fees, memberships, uh, passes, uh, park use, the campground, and TOPAS, all go into one big revenue, uh, collection, and we have reduced that by twenty-four percent, uh, going into this budget from the tentative, just as a result of the, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, then the pandemic we are currently under. A lot of, uh, park use applications going in, particularly the beginning of next year, have been canceled or delayed. So we are, uh, anticipating, uh, further reduction or reduction in our current revenue projection, down twenty-four percent. Transfer from the general fund into the Room Tax Fund, and want to take just a little time to talk about this particular one, because this was reduced thirty-eight percent. Uh, and it is not just a bailout or a gift from the general fund to the Room Tax Fund. These are actual reimbursement for services provided to the general fund, and they are, they are significant. Um, the, the Parks Department provides all the grounds maintenance for the non-gen, or for the non-Room Tax Fund Departments, including Mueller Parkway North, Mueller Parkway South, the Minden Library, the Historic Courthouse, the nine-one-one communication building, the Minden Inn, Stotick Parkway, the Animal Shelter, the Law Enforcement Building, J-LAC Building, Stotick Parkway, Median Strip, and the new Pine Nut Road Roundabout and landscape area along Pine Nut Road. We also provide maintenance, um, up at the Lake, J-LAC Building, as well as the Douglas County Library at the Lake. Uh, we provide that spring through fall, but in the winter, we also do snow removal for these facilities as well. And these include daily inspection and ice melt, and then when we do get a snowstorm, it is all hands-on deck. You get the total resources of the Parks Department to make sure the parking lots are clear, the steps are shoveled, ice melt is applied, and these facilities are open for business in a safe and a clean manner. So, pretty important. Uh, we also like to point out that in two thousand and seven, uh, when we were going through a funding crisis, uh, we had scheduled a number of facilities for closures and service closures. Uh, the park users, the library users, and the senior center users came to the County Board of Commissioners and asked to tax themselves. And a two-cent utility operator fee was put in, uh, to support the general fund transfer in activities to the Senior Center, the Parks Department, as well as the Library Department. That fund right now generates, uh, one point six million dollars, and is also a good justification to use for these repayment services. This is the big topic of the day. Obviously, no fund has been hit like the Room Tax Fund. Uh, we all are aware that the gaming properties, the large hotels, um, both at the lake and the valley have been closed for several months, and the future is unclear as to how much revenue they are going to produce in the future. When the general fund was talking about a five percent reduction, we all know the gnashing of teeth that took place to get you to that point. In the Room Tax Fund, we initially started off with a thirty-eight percent revenue reduction, um, and we're equated to over a twenty percent reduction in expenditures. We have made those cuts, and we'll talk about those a little bit later, but the Room Tax Fund is fortunate, uh, due in part to, uh, a very conservative county board of commissioners that have allowed a reserve, uh, cash balance to be built up within the Room Tax Fund that is in excess of three million dollars today. In fact, just checking our cash balances yesterday, we had a three point seven million dollar cash balance uh, in the Room Tax Fund. We call it a rainy day fund, call it what you like. Uh, if it ain't raining, it is absolutely pouring in the Jer- Room Tax Fund right now, and we are requesting to use a, a portion of that reserve. I also want to point out, when we talk a little bit about the reserve that we are asking for in, uh, this year's budget to balance it, one point two million dollars. We are trying to do everything we can within our current budget to cover that expense and not even dip into the over three million dollars we currently have with cash on hand. Uh, we've already identified over nine hundred thousand dollars worth of easy expenditures that we have stopped uh, since we've rebudgeted or, or budgeted new dollars for our contingency. We're gonna have a ninety-seven thousand dollar contingency that's going to fall to the bottom. So we've easily identified over a million dollars. We believe that with additional diligence and, uh, being very fiscally conservative, we're gonna be able to cover that one point two million dollars with savings just in this current year's budget. And I want to thank the Finance Department and the County Managers Department for working with us, because we've done some things on the interim that we'll talk about as far as twenty-two positions right now currently held open. We've also furloughed a number of positions within the department, so we are doing whatever we can to maximize our savings and our current operations and start out very lean and mean uh, going into our next fiscal year with a very, I guess, um, cautious approach to operation. We know that the information we know today is gonna be very different tomorrow and very different next week. And so what we are proposing is, uh, uh, this cautious approach where we are able to modify on the fly. If things are looking more positive, we certainly can come back to the board and ask to refill some positions. But if it turns out worse than what we have planned, uh, we- some positions, but if it turns out worse than what we have planned, uh, we are able to talk about additional facility closures. The budget that we're presenting today with the use of this reserves has all facilities planned to be open, um, and open to the standpoint where we can provide minimum maintenance and minimum operations, but keep them open and keep them safe. If we do go with this course and, and operating, uh, we would like to provide monthly updates to the board beginning in August, including actual room tax collections, which are typically too much in the rears, but in August, we're, we're working with the Visitors Authority to say, gee, do we have any idea what occupancy is? Room tax is affected by really two things, occupancy and room rate. And so we may hear back that, gee, everybody up at the lake and down in the valley are full, but they comped ninety percent of their rooms to get them full. That doesn't help us out much, so we need to evaluate the data coming out of, uh, people visiting our area in both occupancy and room rate to see if we are going to be able to meet a, a growing set of targets as far as projecting if we're going to be able to meet this thirty-nine percent reduction in room tax revenue. And if we're not, this use of reserves allows us to roll into that a bit and make some adjustments. And if things continue to, to go worse or say we have another stay-at-home order, then we've got some very difficult decisions to make, and we're hoping to have some of that discussion today with the board so staff can plan in the event that we do have another downturn, or we have a second wave, or we have some, um, thing that's going to indicate to us that we cannot make our projections. In event, we understand that we do have still a very large cash balance, but at some point in time, we need to have the decision, uh, discussion to cut additional facilities and close additional facilities. Obviously, we have a number of facilities that we can lock doors on, we can lock fences on, um, uh, closing a park is much more difficult, but we're, we're keeping that option on the table in the event of, uh, further chaos or further pandemic or further downturn in our economy. So if it is fair at some point in time, uh, we'd like to talk about in the event, uh, things are not going as planned rather than coming back to the board in August or in September and saying we had another closure or we have another stay-at-home order, uh, we'd like to be able to say, back in May, we had the discussion that you prioritize the facilities and would like to see the following closed. And so, um, I know it's a difficult discussion to have, but these are some of the facilities that we could close if we needed to in the event of another stay-at-home order or another, uh, hotel closure within Douglas County. And these are obviously the easy ones to close, uh, because you can lock doors on them, you can preserve them, you can keep the public safe by keeping them out of the facility because they are either fenced or they have doors on them. Uh, the first one is the KAL Community Center and Gymnasium. Uh, that facility would net a savings if it were closed for, uh, uh, a short term or a long term. Uh, the Douglas County Community Center and Gymnasium, the Topaz Ranch Estates Neighborhood Center, the Douglas County Fairgrounds Facility, the Douglas County Shooting Facility, and the Topaz Lake Campground and Park. All those have the ability to, to close with. In some cases, there would be savings, uh, by closing them. In other cases, we would just simply need to close them because we no longer can maintain them in a safe manner to invite the public in. We take, for example, the shooting range facility, uh, that has a fence on it, we could lock that, and we would have to do that if we can't get our seasonals on board or we have to reduce staffing to a further degree within the Parks Division. We just simply do not have the manpower to go up there and, and keep that facility operating safe with daily inspections and maintenance.
With that, uh-
Scott.
Mr.-
Scott, um, shutting down the shooting range, um, would also impact, uh, the Sheriff's Department in keeping current on their weapons. How would you propose to, to do that?
We would propose that the Sheriff's Department could, would have a key to the gate. They could go up there and do their, their mandated training, uh, they would have use to it. They would probably, uh, be responsible for just, you know, cleaning up after themselves as they use it. They are not a huge impact on the facility, but they probably would not, um, they would not be precluded from using it. For example, right now, because we haven't brought our seasonals on, we're down to seven park maintenance guys right now, and that includes a working supervisor. We, we have the fairgrounds locked down-
I got you, Ralph.
-right now, pending-
West.
Pending the, the release of, of some seasonals to come up and do that. The Sheriff's Department has a training activity. They're allowed to use the, the fairgrounds facility, but the public is not.
Fairgrounds or the range?
Both, both. An inter-county department would have access to those facilities, so they would not be precluded from using-
Then the other aspect of shutting down the range is it, it's going to put the residents who would normally be at the range out in the BLM land and increase the possibility of a fire. The, the advantage of the shooting range is it keeps those, those people that want to fire safely firing in, in the range, and I can tell you from my experience, I've never seen anybody from the county out there. But, you know, that's, that's just me. I think that, uh, you've got to consider what you're going to do when shutting down the shooting range, where you're going to force people out. If they don't go to the KAL Community Center and Gymnasium, they can go to a gymnasium that's private. But if you shut down the shooting range, they can't go somewhere else except out in the pine nuts and the BLM land and possibly start a fire, which would be something we can't afford either. So I think you need to really think about that before you shut it down. I know you're a hunter and you know what it's like to qualifying your weapons, so I, I think, I urge you to think about that. Mr. Rice?
Uh, that was the point I was, uh, going to make, that, uh, I, I feared that if, uh, the shooting range were shut down, that it would increase our fire danger, and you already made that point, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Engels, did you want to make a comment?
No, I, I concur with what you're saying, and, uh, kind of the same way every time I've been out there, there's, there's just been people using it, and you make your donation into the box, but yeah, you're right, it's going to force these shooters somewhere else. They'll do it.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Nelson, were you going to make a comment?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry for interrupting right then, but, uh, it's, I, I think that's a pretty important point. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Scott Morgan. Uh, I, my point in bringing up the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds is a minimal cost to the county in operation, and in fact, it generates revenue. That facility would be discussed for potential closer in the event we just simply do not have staff to go up there, and it gets checked every day, daily. The, the fare box gets emptied, we empty the trash, we do an inspection on the facility, but truly it is minimal impact. There's certainly not the same impact that we have when we compare to the Douglas County Community Center and Gymnasium. The point that it's just on here is it is on the list because it can be closed. None of these facilities are we recommending to close, and under the current budget submittal with the use of reserves, none of these facilities are closed, and all the facilities can remain open in a safe manner, although, uh, we are very austere in our operation of the facilities. We just wanted to highlight that the next step, if, if cuts go deeper, we are going to have to talk about some type of facility closure. There's no way to operate these facilities without the staff that are required, uh, to do them in a safe manner. And so we just wanted to let you know that if you wanted to have some discussion on that, we're, would like to have that, but if the discussion does not play place, if we have additional closures or a second wave of pandemic, we will be coming back and discussing facility closures, uh, with you, and but wanted to let you know we've had that discussion internally, and again, because of the lack of revenue coming in, it is an unavoidable circumstance that we must go through to talk about, uh, potential facilities closures if, if we have continued revenue shortfalls.
Okay, I, I also want to make the point that if you have to come back and talk about things that you're going to close, you need to come back. Uh, I don't think that we're prepared at this point to say, go ahead and close them in the order that you've, you've suggested. I think you need to come back and make a presentation on what should be closed and when.
Certainly, and it will be in two phases. There would be a savings if, say, we closed, uh, the KAL Community Center and the Douglas County Community Center Gymnasium. There would be, even though, say, the budget, and I, I, I'm not looking at them specifically, KAL has a, uh, eight hundred thousand dollar operating budget. To cut that eight hundred thousand, we're only going to net two hundred thousand dollars in savings because of the revenue component, but those are the, the things that we must take as our next layer of cuts. So I, I'm glad we had the discussion and kind of the forewarning that if we need to make additional cuts, it, it cuts, it is going to involve facility closures.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm not going to spend, obviously, here's a similar with the Parks Department, um, does by way of operation. Right now, we have seven people working our park system right now, and that's why the fairgrounds is locked down, the campground is, is currently closed also because of the governor's orders, as we have interpreted them up to yesterday. Um, in order to open up those facilities, we have seasonals ready to go, but we have held off hiring them to capture savings this year. Our Parks Department has over, uh, seven hundred and sixty acres of parks currently being maintained by seven people, as well as maintaining all of the non-park facilities, uh, throughout the county, and you can see the various, um, operations that they do, and I won't go through all of them unless there are questions. Our Recreation Division, uh, performs, um, all of the various programs listed on the slide. I am going to talk about, uh, some of them, where many of these have been dramatically reduced or eliminated. I am going to talk a little bit about later Adventure Camp and Kids Club as part of, uh, critical jobs infrastructure as our community starts going back to work, and as school right now is still in session, but nobody's going to school, we are sitting on the potential of having a pretty serious crisis within our community. Both mom and dad or both care providers, uh, get called to go back to work, and, uh, junior and elementary school child is still at home taking their in-class, um, uh, virtual, uh, classroom program. They're going to need a place to go, and so we have been preparing for weeks to take on essential workers, our workers that are called back, even though school has been taking, taking place, uh, to, to manage that under the CDC guidelines and preparing for now what we think will be a June fourth, um, opening of a major employer within Douglas County and preparing what we would consider the most crucial program within the Recreation Division, which is Adventure Camp and Kids Club, so that parents can go back to work. Uh, just some statistics, we do a lot of youth programs. Within that, we also have a really positive relationship with the foundation, provides almost a thousand scholarships. Any kid in Douglas County that, that wants to be a member, both at KAL and at the Valley Gymnasium, they can do so and have it a hundred percent paid for by private donated funds. Uh, door counts for both the Senior Center and the Community Center and, um, the, um, KAL Community Center up at the lake. You can see that, you know, we've had really huge numbers, and these are divided by two, so these are, these are annual uses, uh, we push big, big numbers, uh, both at, uh, still at KAL, uh, surprisingly with the declining population, and you'll see those door counts, um, slightly reduced, uh, from year to year to year. It's valuable information for us. Um, we also, it, the Community Center down here is very event-driven, um, and you can see a couple of events. We had a national quilting show back in two thousand, um, eighteen, and we had, uh, another, uh, couple of large, uh, conferences and conventions come into town, really helps drive our, our economy as well as our door count. On the expenditure side, I'm sorry, this is still on the revenue. This is a comparison of the revenues, and you'll see some pretty stark, uh, contrast from the room tax. There's also a, which also includes room tax and the utility operator fee. There is some transient lodger license tax up here in the room tax dollars as well, but you'll see back in two thousand and eighteen, the actual, you're going to see what we, uh, actually did in two thousand and nineteen, growth within the room tax fund, and then you'll see the amended budget, which showed significant increases, and part of that had to do with the five dollar per room night fee that was added on, uh, mid-year. So that amended number, you see that ten million dollar, uh, number, um, jump pretty significantly from the actuals in two thousand and nineteen, and typically our actuals, um, are much more than our budgeted or amended numbers because when we budget, when we're conservative, which led to us to have over a three million dollar reserve in cash right now, but it also comes in late. So by the time we are budgeting for our current year, we haven't had a complete prior year yet, so there's a little bit of lag behind, except for this year. You'll see our tentative budget, which included, I had eleven million dollars just in the room tax dollar on, included that five dollar per night, um, charge at the lake, and then the pandemic started, and that's when you'll see our reductions, take significant, uh, reductions both in the room tax and the TLLT from our tentative, which was reduced from our actuals. Uh, fees and charges, you're going to see what traditionally were almost two million dollars in fees and charges, see a twenty-five percent reduction in charges collected, and then the transfer in, uh, really kind of, um, impacts the bottom line of the budget. You're going to see some pretty, pretty stark numbers here on the transfer in. The library is no longer part this year of the, of the, of the room tax fund. They're now in their own fund, so when you see we go from one point one million dollars to five hundred thousand dollars, that mostly is due in part to taking the library out of the fund. Uh, the library used to receive a large transfer in from the general fund for its operations, and their portion of the sales tax fund also came in to the room tax fund under the transfer in. So the current transfer in right now includes, uh, a three hundred and forty-six thousand dollar transfer in from, for sales tax, twenty percent coming to the room tax front from the PALS account, and then a hundred and sixty thousand dollar transfer in from the general fund. That's kind of a summary of revenue, and I just wanted to see if there are any questions on the summary of revenue. We talked about revenue at the very first part of the presentation, and this is a summary of all those revenue sources.
Questions from the board? Uh, Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I think there's, uh, some misconception among the public that the county gets a lot of money from room tax, and, uh, there's not much left over in the general fund for spending, and, um, so I just wanted to make the point that while there's a lot of money coming in, it goes into specific buckets that we can't control, and so there's very little really, uh, that's, uh, comes to the general fund. I think, uh, the two items that I saw was about fifty thousand dollars, so, um, I just wanted to clear that up with the public that, oh, we, we collect a lot of room tax, it goes to a lot of different places that we don't really have control of.
Actually, um, we, we do in the form of, uh, Mr. Morgan, most of them are not a, um, mainstay elements that we have in, like, for social services and, uh, and operating the Sheriff's Department. However, it does provide a great deal of funding for the ancillary programs that-
Less than half, less than half, most of it goes to promotion.
I'm sorry?
Less than half, most of it goes through, back to promotion of the taxes collected.
Uh, Mr. Morgan, can you direct, uh, can you, uh, elaborate on that more? How much of it goes to a promotion?
This is a overall of the total thirteen cents collected in the valley and the fourteen cents collected, um, at the lake. Of that, twenty-seven percent comes to Douglas County. Sixty-three percent goes to promotion and the convention center.
Yeah.
So, uh, Commissioner Nelson is correct, uh, you'll even know, especially what really blew this thing up is, and this does not even include the five dollar per night room charge, which further bloats the revenue, uh, within the room tax fund, and a lot of people would say, geez, there's a lot of money there, but a lot, all that money, sixty-three percent of it and one hundred percent, I'm sorry, ninety-nine percent of the five dollar per night room charge goes directly right back to promotion.
And i- is that directed by the state, the way the revenue is divided up?
It is directed, uh, this is Scott Morgan, it is directed by NRS, how that money is distributed, and county ordinance with respect to the transient lodgers license tax determines how that money is distributed.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
I, I'm not sure where Commissioner Nelson's going with this, but this money goes back into promotion, and that's what puts heads in beds, that's what puts some more sales tax in our pocket, so I don't know where you're going with this particular comment.
My, my point is that we don't get as much of the room tax as people gen- My my point is that we don't get as much of the room tax as people generally think. That was my point.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Rice, any comments?
No, I I do know that um uh especially the five dollar night room tax, that that all is um mandated by uh N R S, you know, we we have no control over that.
Okay.
I have one more, I have one more question.
Commissioner Walsh, please.
Yeah, just looking at the revenue budget, uh, hundred, page hundred and thirty-one of the uh packet. And the actual amount of revenue uh in room tax for two thousand fiscal two thousand nineteen was nineteen million twenty-five thousand. Uh, the two, the twenty twenty adopted budget was only seventeen million, roughly seventeen. Can somebody explain to me why there's a a decrease of two million dollar?
Uh, Scott Morgan, uh, Community Services Director. Uh, Commissioner Walsh, I pulled that page up just to take a look at it where it is uh distributed and a good portion of it, here's what uh Commissioner uh Walsh is talking about. Bottom line total revenue nineteen million dollars. Then in two thousand and twenty, we adopted a budget, which is the the budget that we're currently operating on um at sixteen million dollars. At the time we adopted that, we weren't sure we were gonna collect nineteen million dollars. We were, we were halfway into that year, we knew the year was going well, but a portion of that is room tax. The other portion of that, and you'll see the various revenue sources, these are all revenues. We had a pretty significant increase in uh donation from the foundation for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the rock wall. And then I'm gonna go up um and just show you the various, these are visas and charges I'm going by. But the room tax actual collections, this is the bottom line here for room tax and this is bottom line T L T. And you'll see that we under budgeted that by about two million dollars. And then coming into the tentative, we saw that new five dollar and I'm kind of highlighting there, I know it's awful, small, an additional two million dollars coming in that was unanticipated in that particular year. So if you look at the total numbers, budgeted versus actual um are are two different things. At the time we were preparing the budget, we had no idea at the time we were going to generate nineteen million dollars in total from all of those sources. And so when we set the budget, we use a more conservative model to do that in in forecasting that. And then in preparing our current years where we started to catch up, we initially were looking at, you know, seventeen million dollars in the tentative, based on this minus donations and minus some of the other charges. Uh, there are reasons for that and then the pandemic hit. And so all rules are off, these numbers which generated the nineteen million dollars in total revenue uh uh have been dramatically reduced. And I just want to make sure I answered your question, Commissioner Walsh.
Yes, thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Morgan, one final question and and that is um what kinds of things are in promotion? Is it strictly advertising or is it uh um monies that can be spent on the uh visitors authorities? And 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 topics that they can do like promoting uh the trails or what have you?
There are uh two kinds really outlined, N R S talks about one they can pay for administrative costs, their cost to rent, their cost to insure, their cost of staff. But their sole purpose is to promote um the recreational and tourist opportunities within Douglas County. And so as broadly as that can be interpreted, um, those are the purposes they do. I know that Commissioner Rice is involved up at the lake. I also sit on the Board of Directors uh for the the Carson Valley Visitors Authority. And I know that great um attention is paid to wisely spending those dollars. The other portion of that, which has been um directed, there has been state uh state law as well as county ordinance carves out specific money for the convention center at the lake. There is one cent dedicated of the T L L T money or the transient lodgers license tax that is dedicated specifically to the convention center. And that was put in by ordinance uh as well as the the five cents, so there is some capital.
Put in, how long ago was that put in by ordinance?
Let me go back, I think I may have referenced that. Uh, we put the lodgers tax in, I didn't put the year in, um, but I believe that was in nineteen. I I will have to get back to you, I I I'm drawing a blank on the year that we put the transient lodgers license tax in.
Okay, um, and the other part of this is, let me ask you a direct question. Can you um uh fund things like the museums out of that uh as visitor promotion items?
That that would, I'd probably defer that question to the District Attorney's Office uh because it is, would partially be a pin opinion. They're not specifically called out, other than if the county was to establish a a fair and recreation board, um, there might be additional latitude to fund museums, culture, performing arts, those types of things uh could potentially be funded. That is discretionary under state law for use of the five eighths of one percent, which is the percentage which you give seventy-five thousand dollars to the Chamber of Commerce. There's a little more latitude in how the county Board of Commissioners can discretionary um spend that money. So there may be an opportunity within that five eighths of one cent that is collected by Douglas County and passed through to the Visitors Authority. And at the lake's case, a portion of that is given to the the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, maybe you should, you should explore that more and give us a recommendation on that. If I'm gonna look at.
I would be happy.
Keeping the museums solid. And before the Dangberg Ranch falls apart in front of us. Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, uh, you've talked about the the revenue, now you're gonna talk about the expenses?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Scott Morgan, Community Services Director. Uh, the first item is we call it Room Tax Administration. And this is a account set up primarily for pass-through funds or paying expenses attributed to the room tax fund. We have budgeted in this current year after reductions, which actually, I say reductions, you actually see an increase uh to the amount proposed in two thousand uh twenty-one. That cost includes a cost allocation, um, just as the room tax fund charged the general fund a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for snow removal and maintenance, uh, the general fund charges the room tax fund for providing legal services, your services as a county board of commissioner, the county manager, finance department, human resources, all of the services that the room tax fund absolutely has to have. Um, by way of support from the general fund, we pay through cost allocation in the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Rent, here's the rent that you were talking about earlier, here's where the rent fifty thousand dollars from the Tahoe Visitor Center comes. And because we haven't uh made a final determination, it is budgeted at fifty thousand dollars. If that amount goes down, that would be a savings in the count. Or if you approve the budget with a reduced amount, that would be an additional lowering the amount required for the consumption of reserves in our operating. This was the increase to the proposed dollar amount, the contract with H D L and host compliance for room tax processing with the onslaught of vacation home rentals. Um, this company um goes out and ensures that we are getting all the room tax dollars we are entitled to. Finance Department puts these contracts together and does a really nice job ensuring that we get all of the room tax we are entitled to. You'll see if you go into the detail of the room tax budget that you see our fines and uh things and and late payments to room tax has been a significant revenue uh enhancement for the room tax fund. Again, most of that money gets passed back through to promotion, sixty-three percent of it. But Douglas County certainly benefits by having these folks in line and there was an increase in their contract that resulted in the increase to the proposed budget. And then there's a small amount for investment services. So those are really administrative costs by the room tax fund. Uh, eight oh two, which is the promotion room tax, this is the pass-through amount. As we collect it, we pass it through. And usually don't see, sometimes we augment that mid-year, but at the end of the year, they get what they have earned or what has been collected on their behalf. And so that dollar amount has been reduced by thirty-nine percent. Getting into the actual operations, uh, this is the Parks Budget. And uh, if there are any questions on that, you'll see service and supplies have, has been reduced. There's been a reduction mainly held uh open salaries uh in the Parks Division. Uh, we have a number of full-time positions, four full-time positions are currently on hold and are proposed to be on hold indefinitely until we get out of this crisis. And you'll see the maintenance activities under services and supplies have been significantly reduced. We have over the last two years with the growth in the room tax fund be able to work on over a ten-year deferred maintenance list, knocking them off one at a time. Um, and you're gonna see that under the amended two thousand twenty budget where we had a one point seven million dollar uh service and supplies. Those were augmented funds coming into the budget from savings to take on uh deferred maintenance uh projects within the Parks Division. One-time money used for one-time expenses to to maintain critical infrastructure in the park system. With the proposed budget, those days are over again. We're back on putting um items on deferred maintenance list, tree pruning, fertilization, aeration of soil, uh, you know, repair projects, painting, finishing things. And this budget you see within the park operation is minimal operations. Emergency repair and safety-related repairs only, bare minimum operations. This is really the line item that would be one of the next to cut if if we do have a downturn or initial closure. Right now, the park seasonal budget is still funded. Uh, we have people waiting to be hired, uh, kind of seeing how things go uh in the current year, but it is also adding to our current year savings. But next year, uh, going into our next fiscal year, uh, these positions are critical to maintain infrastructure. If these, if these, I guess, seasonal positions were not funded or we had to go back and unfund them, this would prompt the closure of the fairgrounds, the campground, not because it it would be a huge savings, we just would not have the ability to maintain them. We would just simply run out of people for a seven-day-a-week operation, over six, seven hundred acres of of parks to maintain. Those facilities that we can lock down would be highlighted for closure. Again, not because it necessarily would be a a big savings. The savings would come by way of a loss of seasonal employment. We simply would just not have the manpower to maintain those facilities. But as under the current budget, those seasonal positions are funded. The recreation, this is recreation administration, this provides the support over um a number of of divisions and and departments, you're gonna see positions held open as part of the savings uh protocols and again, under services and supplies, minimal maintenance activities, minimal projects, uh, safety and emergency repair only. The Cale Community Center, again, um, number of the reductions here are based on positions currently being held open, over twenty positions are currently building, held open. So the salary savings you see, there are positions that are being held open currently. Uh, the positions that we do have funded allow the facility to operate under minimal operations. It looks like we are gonna have the discussion with the county manager's office and human resources, given the governor's direction to reopen the gym facilities. And we would be proposing uh before we make it public, after discussion with the manager's office, to start with a minimum operation, not seven days a week, but five days a week under maybe fewer hours to kind of roll into it, limiting the number of participants. The current proposed budget allows us to do that under the current governor's guidelines. We weren't sure when it was gonna happen, we do, it was going to happen at some point in time and we have been prepared for that. Uh, you're gonna see service and supplies dramatically reduced. Uh, this pays the light bill, pays the heating bill, allows us to keep the building clean and allows us to make some minimal repairs. If something crucial or something very expensive or critical uh were to take place, this is a discussion we'd have with the county manager's office and possibly ultimately come to the board for emergency funding of something unforeseen circumstance as by way of major maintenance and repair or buildings and grounds maintenance in our facilities. Because throughout the room tax budget, we are uh have established a service and supply budget that is minimal. Valley Gym and Fitness, again, the majority of the savings and salaries um are positions that are held open and are proposed to be held open for a number of of months, uh, including potentially the entire year. If things were to, we'd have an uptick or an uptick in our uh community would allow us the opportunity to come back to the board and potentially fill some of those positions. But right now, we are planning on operating under minimal uh staffing and minimal services and applies. Again, service and supplies are reduced mainly in major maintenance and repair items, which is consistent throughout the whole room tax budget. The the meeting room facility, very similar scenario, minimal maintenance, positions being held open. Some of the impacts of this, I guess I incorrectly said twenty-two vacancies, it's twenty-three vacancies held open. The result of holding twenty-three vacancies open for an entire year is a four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar savings annually. We have currently, over the last month, furloughed twenty-two recreation employees. The result of that furlough is a four thou, or forty-five thousand dollar per month savings. The current budget that you are considering funds those furloughed positions. The positions that have been furloughed are kids club and adventure camp positions. Because we're not operating those programs right now, we chose to furlough those positions. And in the event that there is a need for critical jobs uh program uh supported by the county through childcare program, we can bring those positions back because they are funded. But in the interim, by furlough them, we are saving an additional forty-five thousand dollars. It would be our proposal that once our economy gets up and there is an immediate demand for childcare, that we unfurlough those positions as they are needed to provide critical um jobs, infrastructure and childcare for our community. And I kind of elaborate on that on this slide. The other uh piece that has been eliminated, you see concert in the parks have been eliminated, trips have been eliminated, special events, community programs uh have all been placed on either indefinite suspension or have been eliminated entirely. Significant reductions in maintenance activities, as we've talked about fertilizer, tree trimming, all the preventative maintenance that we have, we come to enjoy over the last two years catching up on our infrastructure maintenance is now been placed on hold until we can get through um the current pandemic. All capital projects, other than those that you see for R C T, which is residential construction tax projects. Um, and Commissioner Nelson has mentioned those a couple of times and called those out. These are funds that we have collected from growth, development in our community that places an impact on our parks infrastructure. We collect a thousand dollars per new home construction. As we collect it, a clock is, a clock is ticking, which requires us to spend it under timeframes. If it's a standalone house, three years or if the clock starts ticking after seventy-five percent of a subdivision has been completed and if we do not spend those really precious one-time funds, we have to return them. So we, you will continue to see us bring forward residential construction tax projects for parks, even though sometimes it just doesn't make sense. You know, why are we doing something, uh, and we had the discussion about the remetering of a ball field? Why are we doing that? One will save us money, but we have so many other needs within the park system. Well, some of those funds are not eligible in certain areas or uh the, some of the projects aren't eligible, things like trailheads and and doing maintenance projects. So um, it's really important that the board, as well as our community, understands the color of money when we talk about those types of things. You'll also see on your upcoming agenda, we received another donation from the foundation for improvements to the Topaz Ranch Estates Community Center. So as donations come forward with private money to make improvements to our facilities, we will continue to bring those projects forward as well. we will continue to bring those projects forward as well to make those enhancements that have been identified as a need within our community. We will also continue to bring forward grant-funded projects and projects that are safety-related. And we'll be talking about some of those at the next board meeting as well. So even though project, capital projects for just pure room tax, as well as major maintenance and repair projects have been eliminated, there are still projects that will be coming forward for your decision. So I want to, because it just, sometimes it is hard to understand why we're spending this kind of money on some of these things when we're taking a 39% reduction in room tax revenues. All equipment, vehicles, parks maintenance equipment, equipment replacement, not just through the room tax fund, but in the senior fund as well, has been eliminated. We will still, we'll try to repair equipment as needed and as necessary, and support for our local organizations. Right now, we're not sure when youth sports are going to come back, but we know we've already lost Little League this season, so our budget reflects a reduction in ball field light cost that has been factored in. There is still some ball field light money in there, but it may affect our ability to support our local youth sports facilities through maintenance, because we just won't have the maintenance staff to help with ball field prep, as well as arena lighting and facility lighting that they may be demanding. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Morgan, a very thorough presentation. Interesting aspects to the room tax operation. Question from commissioners. I can't see Commissioner Nelson or Commissioner Rice. Do either of you have questions?
None here.
I have none. That was very thorough, and because of my involvement up here at the lake, I understand quite what has to go where. So that was very well put together, Scott, I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan, and I appreciate your presentation.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
I don't see any questions.
Comment, I have a comment.
Did you have a question?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to, first of all, I want to thank Scott for his presentation. It really clarified a lot of information for me, but I think it's, the decrease in room tax revenue, so $6.5 million is a perfect example of how critical the hospitality and tourism business industry is to Douglas County. And while it may not come through the, hold on a second. While it may not come through the general fund, it certainly provides a lot of services to the community, and we really need to recognize that. So I think it's important for us to do anything we can in our power to protect and ultimately enhance this revenue source. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any further comments? Ms. Willoughby, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Engels, go ahead.
Commissioner Walsh is correct, and it not only impacts our county, but the state of Nevada depends on tourism as its primary source of revenue. So this is just across the board, and is going to have a major impact on the state. So everybody's doing everything that they can, and it was well put together. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Engels, appreciate the comments, very supportive of what he's doing, and I think it reflects well on commission and on Mr. Morgan. Ms. Willoughby, are you looking for us to make a motion to approve the changes in the room tax fund?
Yes, approve the budget as presented or with any changes.
Okay, then if there are no further questions, we'll be looking for a motion. Any further questions?
No, I have no further questions. I would move that we approve, and I haven't got a copy of the agenda in front of me, but I would move that we approve the tentative budget for the room tax fund with the changes that we discussed.
One second. Okay, Ms. Willoughby, is that satisfactory motion for you? So we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Rice, is that correct?
Yes.
And so we'll call for the vote. If there's no further discussion, any further discussion? So we'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, the motion carries. We'll move on for possible action. This is item three, discussion to review the proposed changes to the tentative budgets for Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency and adopt the fiscal year 2020-21 fiscal budgets for Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency. Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, Chairperson Terry Willoughby, for the record. I will defer to Doug. I don't think we need another action because the budgets were approved on items one and two.
Mr. Ritchie?
I'm looking at the action, thank you Chairman Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. The previous items were to approve change to the tentative budgets. Item three is actual final budgets, adopt the fiscal year final budgets. Obviously, you don't have to redo, you don't have to discuss all of the previous budget items, but I would go ahead and read it into the record and then have a motion to adopt the fiscal year final budgets.
I did read it into the record. So if there's no further discussion, seeing none, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Walsh here, I would move that we adopt the Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency fiscal 2021 final budgets.
Commissioner Engels, did you want a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by Commissioner Engels. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. All right, the motion carries. And so now we'll be moving on to closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction control of the Board of Commissioners. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on Douglas County Public Comment phone line 775-783-6007. The voice messages will be played to the public and county commissioners in order they are recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played to the county commissioners and public. Ms. Wood, do you have any public comment recorded?
Natalie Wood, for the record, I have received one so far, and I will start playing it.
Okay.
Ellie Waller, W-A-L-L-E-R. Yesterday at the end of the meeting, I suggested you revisit the planning position. Do not cut it until next year. We are understaffed in the planning department. We need to get them as much help as possible. We have so many things going on, some things could fall through the cracks because there isn't enough staffing there to answer all the community's questions that could arise from possible rezonings, master plan changes, et cetera. Of course, I've always stated we need to do community plan updates sooner than later. These rezonings must stop.
And that is it for public comment.
Everybody's muted.
Go ahead, I've been muted.
So in regard to the budget now, how will the county proceed? I guess this would be for Mr. Cates and Ms. Willoughby.
So Ms. Willoughby, can you go through the process from now until submission of the budget and the date it's going to be submitted?
Yes, so what we do is, there's a lot of forms that the state has that the budget has to be input on. We've already started on that work. It has to be submitted at tentative, and then again for final, they have a specific format they want it on. And so we will be completing those forms over the next couple of days, analyzing them, and they have to be submitted to the State Department of Taxation by June 1st at 5:00 PM. And we will, it'll become effective July 1st in our financial system.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, just make sure that the board does get the final budget so we see exactly where we're at.
Of course.
Okay, are you going to give us a bound copy, or are you going to give us a presentation?
You'll be provided a bound copy, and this final state reports will also be on the website.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, are you looking for a presentation?
No, the bound copy will be fine.
Okay, and what was the time on the last public comment?
It was from 10:09. Yeah, they called after you closed public comment, the opening public comment.
When it ended, it was 41, so it's 43. So we've got two minutes, three minutes to receive more public comment from Mr. Ritchie Is it permissible, Mr. Ritchie, that we ask further questions if there are any during this timeframe?
Thank you Chairman Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. It's cleaner if you have a, if the public comment period is dedicated just to that
Any other comments from commissioners, closing comments? I would just like to clarify with Mr. Ritchie, the next meeting, will we be back in the courthouse?
Thank you Chairman Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. We will be meeting in person. Now, let me rephrase that. The board may appear telephonically under the open meeting law, however, a physical location must be identified. The governor's restriction on the number of people, I think, has been increased to 50. Due to the elections, we will not be at the board chambers, we'll probably be at the CVIC hall.
Six feet apart?
Six feet apart.
So, everybody understand? Well, if there are no further questions, then we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you for all the people that have worked on this. Ms. Willoughby and staff have done an excellent job. Thank you for dividing it up. We've gone through every line item, or we had the opportunity to go through every line item of the budget. And Mr. Cates, we appreciate you boiling it all down for us, especially your spreadsheet. I thank all the commissioners for their time and effort and their comments. And at that, I'll declare we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.